Hey Mike. I did not hear you. Can't hear you, Mike. Can you talk again? Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you fine. I cannot hear Mr. Graham though.
Okay.
I am Bob Kohler. I can hear you. I hope y'all can hear me.
We can definitely hear you. So the problem is with Mike.
Does that, does that do any?
We can hear you. I think I could, I could hear you before then. I heard your papers moving, I believe. So you don't have to have the earphones on if you don't want to. I don't think. I can hear you now.
Okay, let me know.
No, no, no. Let's see. Can you talk? Yeah, you're good.
You can hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
All right, let's see who we have here. Hi Juan.
How are you, Jimmy?
I'm good. How are you?
Doing good.
Well. Waiting on Larry and Mike, I believe. Here's Larry.
Hi, everybody.
Hey Larry.
Hi Larry.
Hi Bob, welcome.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
For those of you don't know, this is Bob Kohler from SP Plus.
Hi Bob, thanks for joining us.
Glad to be here.
Only one person is missing. Give him a couple more minutes if you guys don't mind, and if not, we'll, we'll start without him.
Is snowing down there yet?
Uh, it is definitely snowing, Larry.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Yeah, where are you at?
I'm in Castle Rock.
It's not snowing there?
Nope, nope. Yeah, but I had a, Woodturners were supposed to have a Christmas party in Pueblo tonight, and they canceled it because it was snowing so hard in Pueblo.
Oh wow. Yeah, it's been snowing here for probably several hours.
Ah, okay.
Not sticking, not sticking yet though. Hey, James is here with us as well. Go on, Jimmy. Hi, how are you?
Not too bad.
Okay, I think we can, we can probably start and maybe Ed Barsati later if he joins us. He did, uh, he did tell me he'll be here, but we'll, we'll start without him. We have a core. Everyone's okay with that?
We're good.
Yes.
All right, uh, December thirteenth, Metro Poden District Meeting. Uh, it is three thirty-three. Uh, Lena, would you be kind and do the roll call for us?
Yep.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chairman Jimmy Shlomo.
Here.
Director Michael Graham.
Here.
Director Larry Fox.
Here.
Secretary Michael Barsati. Ronnie Lay. And Treasurer Paul Jackson.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, got approved, uh, October eleventh, uh, regular meeting minutes. If somebody wanna do that.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as written.
Is there a second?
Ralph, why don't you do that? I, I wasn't in that meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, that would be one, two, three, zero if, uh, my grandkids vote on that.
Uh, yeah, I don't know if I can vote or not.
Okay.
So.
Three does, that went approved, uh, three to zero. Um, reports, finance report. Hi Nicole. Uh, you're muted. There you go.
You could say, you could see I could, I said hello. Um, let's see here. Let me get up the screen. Where we go look at the agenda. Okay. Oh. So this is the November only, um, numbers. Can everybody see those?
No.
Are you sharing to the screen, Nicole?
I thought I was.
Now you are, now you are.
November only. Here are the revenues. No surprises. We'll go down a little lower. Once again, no surprises, nothing I feel like I need to point out. Then if you go down below, we have um, through November. And it's actually this line. Sorry, highlighted one column here. And again, there is.
It is highlighted on the, on the packet. If anybody's looking at the, you know.
Usually I highlight the actual numbers and it's the budget numbers that got highlighted. So I apologize for changing format. And does anyone have any questions?
Um, I looked at it prior. I do not have any questions. Um, anybody else?
No.
No.
Thank you much.
Alright, thank you Nicole. Appreciate it. Our next report is the parking report. Hi James.
How's it going?
Good, how are you?
Doing, doing well. Um, so for this month. Um, starting off with the revenue report. Uh, if you guys have had a chance to look at that, it's a little bit different looking. Presents the same information, just slightly different formatting. Um, should hopefully be a little bit cleaner for you guys as well. Um, but starting at the top here with overall revenue, um, we're looking, uh, and I don't know if Kevin goes through those or if you guys just. Um, I can also display them on screen if that's easier as well.
Uh, I'm looking on my computer. Not sure about the others. Um, it's, uh, page thirteen out of the packet.
I've got it here.
Okay.
I'm looking at it too. Looks good.
Any, any questions? Um. No question about that. I do have a question about the added, uh, digital permit discussion that I've seen on the agenda. Is that by you, James?
Yes, so it's, it's more or less just informational. Um, so, uh, it more or less goes through our current, uh, permit process as far as issuing. Um, as well as just brings up the idea of, of potentially using digital permits instead of a physical hang tag. Um, and so, uh, more or less right now, um, we, we have the capability of, of, of establishing and, and taking online payments for, for parking permits. We don't currently use it. Um, right now, we just kind of use the, the, the city's built application. Once we get that application, we enter all the data, um, and then the customer has to go through and, and pay separately. Um, so that's something that, that we can implement, um, but we, we don't currently use it, um, at the moment. Um, but this particular system would work best if we were to use a, a digital permit. Um, cause then we, we really wouldn't have a whole lot of, uh, extra processing that we would need to do. And the customer wouldn't have to go through and, and pay separately. So they would be able to go online, pay for the permit. All we'd have to do is just, uh, verify the documentation. And then we can approve the permit and it would automatically apply to the vehicle that they provide. Um. Kind of the benefits of this is it would save the cost of the, the physical parking passes. Um, it would also eliminate situations where people are losing their passes and needing to get replacements or permits are, are being stolen, um, uh, that kind of thing. Um. Uh. This could also be a potential increase in permit revenue. So right now, um, with the, the permit hang tags, um, they're valid in any vehicle that, that they're displayed in currently. Whereas if we were to go to a digital format, we would have, uh, the ability to, uh, assign individual permits to a specific vehicle. So if we wanted to implement a policy to where one, one permit per vehicle, um, that would increase the amount of permits that would be, need to be sold. Um, whereas right now we have just a couple of permits that are more or less just being switched out through different vehicles. So it opens up that possibility. Um, alternatively, we would need to provide, uh, customers with, um, a portal that would allow them to change their, their vehicle information at will. Um. And, and this is something that, that we would be interested in looking at anyways. Um, especially if we, we do ultimately go digital for our residential permits, um, in town as well. Um, but if, if, if you wanted to switch to this, that would have some additional development time. Um, so if, if, if you guys decide to, to discuss it further and you do want to move forward with a digital permit format, that's something that, that we can do, but it would take, uh, more development time. Um. Another benefit of the, the digital permits, um, is you would, you would have more efficient enforcement. So, um, right now we're, we're already looking at, um, LPR technologies to, to more or less automate parking lot enforcement. Um. Uh, we're very much, uh, uh, in the beginning phases of that, looking at maybe doing some pilots. Um, but if we do go that route, um, this could be a benefit, um, for, for digital parking permits. Cause it, it, it would allow the LPR to, to, to catch that license plate and automatically determine whether or not that person has a permit. Um, currently we have vehicle mounted LPR, um, so it would even benefit us with, uh, the technology that we already have. Um, it would allow us just to be able to drive through the parking lots, um, and be able to just quickly identify, uh, vehicles that, that have the permits, um, assigned to their vehicle. Whereas currently unless we recognize a vehicle, we, we more or less have to check those permits manually. Um, which can take additional time, um, especially if it's snowed recently. Uh, cause then we run into a situation where we're having to go through and clear off the windshield to be able to verify the permit. Um. And so this would eliminate a lot of that extra steps. Um, leading to, to, to more of a efficient enforcement. Um, another benefit is there's, there's little change to the current, uh, permit issuance process. We, we more or less have all this infrastructure in place to be able to switch to that. Um, if you were to choose with, of course, the exception of the, the portal to, to change those plates on demand. So, um, this more or less was just, uh, meant to be informational and bring to your attention the, the capabilities that we, we have available. Um, and we've, we've talked about doing digital permits, uh, for the city as well. So, um, let me know if you guys have questions, concerns, um, or if this is something you'd be interested in exploring further.
Uh, let's decide on that, uh, after the presentation. If you guys don't mind, um, I just didn't wanna spend uh, more time with Bob's, uh, more Bob's time. So, um, any questions about the revenue report from James?
Well, I, I have a question. I don't know. This is probably more towards Juan, but, uh, uh, in some ways it's none of our business, but, uh, Kevin has been an integral part of our uh, communication with the city for quite a number of years. Uh, can I ask what happened?
Uh, there's, there's different things that we're not allowed to talk about, but, uh, we, uh, we just wish them the best, you know, uh, in his future endeavors and, um, yeah, but we're not, we're not allowed to speak on about it at this time.
Okay, we get to fill his position then for manager? I guess he was the manager before? Is that was his title?
That was his title, correct.
Okay, are we planning on film, filling that or?
Uh, yes, we're, we're planning on, um, filling in that position.
Okay, and as James acting manager then, is that what's happening or?
He's, he's the interim right now. He's been the, the lead, uh, parking ambassador for, for a while now. So, um, he's really the second in command right now to myself.
Great. Well, that's good hands. Um, I definitely will miss Kevin, but that, we have to look forward and not backwards. So I know it's a HR issue, so we really can't talk about his departure, but I do wish him the best. If I do see him again.
We all do. Um. Back on track, uh. Any questions for James before we're gonna approve those reports?
I've got just one question and I, I think it's what started the report on the uh, digital parking. And the question was, last week we want, I wanted to know, I wanted on the agenda, do we have the hang tags for twenty twenty-four? Do we have them in hand?
Yeah, we're, we're currently working right now on getting those expedited so that we can have them, uh, before the, before January. And, uh, so we should have them in place.
Okay, I mean, do you have them in your hand?
We, we don't. Uh, we're expecting delivery before the, before, uh, January.
Yeah, cool. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Um, any other questions?
No, we can talk about the um, permits later. Let's go to SP, I guess.
Um, gotta approve those reports real quick.
Oh, that's right. I'll move that we approve the financial reports and the parking report.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 That would be, any opposed? That was four to zero. Mike is still not here, correct?
Yes.
I heard him.
Oh, yeah?
I'm here.
There he is. I see him.
Oh, you're at the bottom of my screen.
Yeah, I heard that voice. Yeah, he's here. Good.
Okay, that was five to zero, I know.
Five to zero.
Hi Mike.
All right, new business. Hi Mike, by the way. Thanks for joining. Uh, new business, SP Plus presentation. We got Bob Kohler with us. Bob?
Uh, th- thank you. Thanks for, uh, inviting me and, uh, I'm Bob Kohler. I'm the vice president for SP Plus for the, uh, Colorado market. And, um, I've got a, uh, presentation for y'all to talk about, uh, actually kind of what James was talking about with the, you know, using digital, um, you know, parking and cameras to do that enforcement. So I can, I'll share my screen here and hopefully this will come through. And if y'all can tell me that when you can see it, um, I guess.
We can see it.
Okay, alright. Uh, very good. Um, so the, um, what, SP Plus has a product called Sphere. It's a suite of digital services. And the product that Larry and I had been talking about was our, um, you know, digital payment and enforcement processes that use LPR cameras. Um. Let me go back, try to get this thing to move again. Let me go back, try to get this thing to move again. Did it? Uh, I'm guessing it didn't jump to the next slide, did it? There, let's see if that. There we go. Um, you should be seeing uh cam- the these are the cameras that we use. Um, the we use the OmniQ camera and we we can mount it on a pole and we can mount it in a bollard. Uh, so just a couple of pictures what that would look like for you. And uh these cameras, they have a ninety-five percent read rate. Um, and uh they're uh, you know, they're we they're very reliable in any weather. We can mount them on a pole. We can mount them in the bollard. Uh, they're power over ethernet cable. Um, pow- they're powered through power over ethernet. And looking at the two lots, there's T two units there and solar um uh panels. So we're uh hopeful that there's enough power and data that would get us there. The best way to uh run the cameras for the enforcement side of it is with the uh is power over ethernet. Um, and this is just some of the things that I was just mentioning about the benefits of the camera. Um, the next thing I wanted to talk about is where the cameras would be placed. Now, one of the things that S the some of the things I'm going to talk about here for this installation in the cameras. These are all gonna S P plus would provide all of this for you at our cost. We would depreciate it over like a three-year term of an agreement. And um so at the uh Wichita lot. I'm I'm assuming you're seeing this entrance here and we've got uh we would put delineators down the middle and then there would be, we would install uh uh two poles that would have the cameras on it to do the uh look at the license plates on the way in and uh on the way out. And the the T two units would no longer be necessary. And you can see just off the picture where and at least on this lot where the T two units are very close and the solar panel is at the bottom of the the ramp. We would also put uh loops into the uh driveway to uh trigger the cameras as someone pulls in. Now, what the we what we would refer to this uh as is our sphere on on-demand product. Which means the customer is gonna, when they drive in, and I'm gonna walk through this with you, just give you a and a little more to is to what you're seeing now to understand. But the customer's gonna pull in. They're gonna go drive over a loop. It's gonna trigger the camera. The camera's gonna take a picture of their license plate. And then when they go to pay for one of the signs, that'll get to you'll see what those look like as well. The um it'll link their their license plate that they entered into their phone to the license plate that the camera picked up. So um so anyway, that and we put cameras to look at both sides, because you know, sometimes people don't, they'll go you know, in the outer, out the end. Um, so we recommend the, you know, the cameras looking both ways. Um, and they, this is probably the more challenging part of the installation on the backside of the lot um on Lover's Lane. And again, we would put uh four four cameras. There'd be uh three on poles and one of them would be a bollard camera. Um, so again, we're looking at uh now this driveway is probably only eight, you know, sixteen or eighteen feet wide. So there's a little bit of it, you know, there definitely is, people might not be perfectly centered. So again, the two cameras are gonna pick it up. Now, we would, we would install this little island here, which would shorten up that first parking space that's parallel to Lover's Lane. We would also recommend putting in these deline- and we would, we would take care of all this uh as part of the ins- you know, our installation. Run delineators along the street so that cars just can't jump the curb. Um, and the very first parking space uh on the left-hand side where we would uh probably, we would recommend uh that that space, so we have the right geometry for the camera angles to work. That that space would would have to be eliminated. Um, any questions so far? No.
None.
Okay, um, so and now I'm gonna move over to, I I think I'm saying this right, the Smiths Chiny lot. Did I get that right? Okay, on this lot, um, again, the the T two units, you can't quite see them, but as you guys I'm sure know, they're off to the right-hand side a little bit. We would have to trench the data from there over to the entrance uh entrance lane here. We'd put four bollard cameras in. We'd put the delineators down the middle. Um, we would put the each of these ballers would be on like a four-by-four concrete pad. And again, so we, that way we can capture the cars, you know, going in, you know, if they go in the right way or go out the 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 right way. It that that's the easy part. The then we have enough, we have the cameras there in case they decide to go the wrong way. Um, and the so we're, we think that's, and then here's an aerial view of that same thing. Where again, this little spot, it looks like um this little spot here on the end, on the left-hand side of the uh PowerPoint is maybe that the those delineators were there, so someone could park there. But we would uh to get the the lane itself is only twenty feet wide. So and to get the cameras in um and have two lanes of uh and uh two lanes of traffic. Uh, that spot would probably also have to be sacrificed. And we would try not to lose the spot on the right-hand side, but when we put those pads in and this would be, you know, as the engineers draw it up for us, we would tell you what if that space would be um if we could save it.
I can tell you, Bob, the one on the left, sorry to interrupt you, the one on the left over there is actually uh being used only for bikes at the moment. So it wouldn't, might not be as bad of a loss. The right one, uh if we can prevent taking one spot, um, yeah, I mean, eh, it's huge.
Okay, yep. No, I know it's only a forty-four, forty-five space lot. So I understand every space is is critical. Um, it's just we can t- and again, we can figure out what it looks like when the engineers draw it and we're getting ready to, you know, if we go go forward um to, you know, what the where the concrete pad would look like. Um, so just to give you an idea, we would provide all the signage. Uh, there'd be some signs that be these big thirty-two by thirty-two signs that give you the QR code, let folks know that it's enforced twenty-four seven. We'd have other uh lot uh signage that you see on the left-hand side that would give folks the opportunity to scan the QR code in various places around the lot. And it really is very much customer parks. Customer, they use their phone to pay, because though, and I'll walk through the customer experience here here next. Uh, but you park, you pay and you walk away. And once you've scanned that QR code, it's you can kind of, you can choose how long you're going to be there. Um, and then frankly, if you stay longer than you originally selected, as your parking session's getting ready to end, you get a text message that says, hey, your parking session's about to end. Would you like to, you know, extend your time? So but we would provide all these signs. These are stock uh images. If you have a certain look that you want, like to um make them city of, you know, the city of of Manitou Springs. You know, or we can, we can customize the look of the signs, you know, with your input. Um, now here's the customer experience and I I hope y'all can see this. Um, but as I mentioned with you, um, you know, you you drive in the lot and you park. You scan, you take out your phone, you scan a QR code, then it's gonna open up the parking dot com app. And you're gonna enter your license plate information. And as I mentioned, then when you put the information into the app, it's gonna pair the license plate that's in the the parking dot com app to the one to the image that the cameras took. And then it's gonna, you're gonna select your parking duration. Um, so it, and I know at the moment, your rates are two dollars for each hour to a fifteen-dollar maximum on these two lots. Um, and so then you select how long you want to uh park. Then you have to add your your personal information, which is gonna be your credit card information and your um your e- your email or your um yeah, your your email address, right? And then when you, then it's gonna process your your the your payment for the length of time that you parked. Um, and then you're able to see the countdown on your phone of how much time that you have to park. Any questions on that part of the customer experience?
Not for me.
Alright, um, as far as from an enforcement perspective, now if you, if you drive in and the camera grabs your your plate and you don't put any information in or you don't put payment information in, that's gonna send a violation notice to the registered owner of that car. Um, and if someone uh and we use a third-party service that that does all that, because you there are rules and laws that need to be followed. And we use a third-party law firm that is, you know, qualified to do this. Um, and so when the customer gets their violation in the notice uh or their violation notice in the mail, um, they're gonna be able to go to a portal. And they're gonna enter the violation number. It's gonna take them there and they can either dispute it or they can pay it. Um, and this is just like an idea, you know, what it looks like. Um, here's, yeah, just a, so again, customer gets the uh gets gets cited, they get the, they go to the violation portal and this is just, you know, it's a little kind of a busy slide, but it gives you an idea of what everything kind of looks like through the steps. They enter the violation number and they can pay it or dispute it.
Question for you?
Sure.
Uh, for the third-party citation, uh any cost to us, or is that part of the deal and you guys cover it with the attorneys and everything else?
Yep, and I'm gonna get to the numbers here just in a little bit, but the the answer, the short answer is yes, it's a dollar seventy-five for every violation notice that goes out. Um, and then you, the now in in the performer that I put together that we'll look at in just a moment, I used forty dollars as the violation um amount. That can be whatever number you want it to be. And then that is shared between the city and or the lot owners and SP plus at a seventy-five, twenty-five percent or seventy-five going to the city. I'm sorry?
Okay.
Okay, um, this is just a screenshot of there's a dashboard that you can see the activity on the lot. You can see the 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 images of the cameras that are looked at. And what happens on the backend is before we send violations out, we actually have folks that look at the images to make sure that they are in fact paired. As we, we want to try to make sure we send out legitimate, you know, im- you know, violation notices. Um, and not really, you know, wouldn't want to have just bad things going out or things that, you know, so we don't, we don't recommend just bulk sending every violation possible out every day. We do look at them before we send them. Just to give you, and you guys would actually have access to this exact same portal. So you'd be able to see it uh as well. Um, so now here's the part you you might want to have an idea um on. So I did, I did do some for the um I did some projections of the revenue um for the size of the lots and I'll show you how I how I did that. But here's kind of the beauty of it. With with this technology, you have essentially three expenses. Credit card fees, the SAS fee and the violation fee for mailing the violations. Um, you know, if with manual enforcement, you're gonna have labor, you're gonna have um, you know, the 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 all the costs associated with labor, um, insurance for, you know, for the attendant to be, you know, coming on the lot and also, you know, cost of the of enforcement vehicle to get there and the fuel that goes into it. So these, you know, these costs in I hope I got close on the revenues, because you guys know what that is, right? And then you can take, these are, these would be the the SAS fees, those are fixed. The enforcement fee, that's based on, you know, a estimate of how many violations that were being issued. So that that's a variable cost that'll change based on, you know, the the experience of who, you know, how many violation notices go out. Um, if you have some history on that, um, I could, you know, play around with that, but it's the, it's a dollar seventy-five for every violation notice that goes out. Um, here's how I came to the revenue lot and this is the revenue slot is if this is the Wichita lot and it's two dollars every hour to the fifteen-dollar max. And I estimated that ten percent of the people parked for an hour, thirty-five percent parked for one to two hours, thirty-five percent parked for two to three hours and smaller numbers down through the daily max. And then I've looked at the number of ca- of the calendar days of what is a slow, medium and peak weekday and what is a slow, medium and peak weekend day. Um, to to come up with the number of transactions. And so that, you know, the numbers obviously in the performer are annualized. And I, but I do understand that there's seasonality, um, you know, where folks are coming to all the tourist destinations in the summer and there's more activity, you know, in the summer and there's turns um on the lot. So this is how I came to the Wichita lot. And this is how I came to the, I I'm gonna say it wrong again, but I'll get close, I guess, with Smitschiny. Kind of the same, it's all the same process, smaller lot, fewer uh, a fewer transactions. Um, and uh, that was what I had had for y'all to tell you a little bit about what our product does. It's really, it's it's you pay digitally, it's enforced digitally. Your cost, you have a really good idea of what your costs are gonna be. Um, and you, you know, the labor you might be spending today, um, doesn't, you know, is un- isn't necessary any longer. Um, and I'm gonna pay for uh all of these insta- you know, the cameras, the the delineators, the poles, the installation, um, everything I talked about here is cover, all those cap upfront capital costs are covered by SP plus. Um, one other thing, when James was talking, um, we we actually use this product in parking garages. And uh we can include all the monthly parking in that, in the backend portal that you would uh, we we call it Spotman, but we just, we put everybody in there and we put their license plate in there. And now their license plate is their credential. So you're not needing to buy a credential. Um, you're the the, depending on how you want to configure it, if they have one or two cars in there or have to pay for every car, we would have to, it was not part of what I prepared for today, but it kind of dovetails into what this can do. Um, but we can, we can provide that permitting side of it for you as well. In, you know, in coordination with, you know, they would maybe get it from the city and then we just the engine that drives it ends up being um SP plus. Um, the, one of the other questions I do occasionally get, you do not need to download an an app. Uh, the, when you scan the QR code, the app just pops up on your phone and, you know, your customer experience is immediate.
Bob, could we go back uh one page or two on your? Uh, thank you, right there.
Okay.
Thanks. Um. Anybody has questions? I'm sure, I'm sure there is. Uh, if they don't, I will start, but uh Larry or anybody else?
I I do. I thought, Bob, you might want to explain our cost in this. Uh, right now, we're paying for an internet fee and we're paying for a credit card fee. Uh, and a transaction fee. In with your system, are we paying for any of those things?
Uh, the credit card fee you would you would pay for. The customer would pay the a ninety-nine cent transaction fee, so the the two-dollar parking would be two dollars plus ninety-nine cents. The um the there, you wouldn't, the you wouldn't have the internet, because it would be the, we'd have, we'd be, well, the internet that's going to the T two units right now, that that's still necessary to be able to do the power over ethernet.
Okay, the the credit card fees, how, what does that amount to?
Uh, it's projected at four point two percent of the tra- of the sales.
Okay, so on a two-dollar fee, we pay eight, eight cents?
I'm sorry?
So on a, on a two-dollar, you know, a two-dollar, a person parks for an hour.
Right.
We we pay eight cents for that credit card fee. Is that right?
Um, well, yes and no. The, every credit card processor has a slightly different structure. So it does end up being around four point two percent, because sometimes credit card companies have a a flat fee for just doing the transaction. And then they have a percentage of the sale. Um, so it's it it ends up on a two-dollar one, it's probably gonna work, it's gonna be more than um than four point two percent, but averaged out over the the year would be the four po- is where I'm using the four point two percent.
Okay.
Who's your credit card processor, Bob?
Um, uh, we use Heart uh Heartland. Um, and for, and we might, for these, I think we use Square.
Okay.
So.
Is it a tier, is it a tier structure on this credit card? Is that, is that what you're referring to? Because there's two different methods.
Right, with with Square, they they do in fact uh have a tiered structure where you, like for the example I gave earlier. Right, with with Square, they they do in fact uh have a tiered structure where you, like the example I gave earlier. Where it's like fifty cents for the the just for doing a transaction and then there's a percentage of the sale, so. If it was, you know, and I don't have that tier in front, that structure in front of me, um but that's how, that's how Square works.
Okay, Larry? You had another question?
That was uh. Uh. The what I was getting at there, the the city uh presented a uh their. Their QR uh situation to us a a couple of months ago and the difference here. I wanted to point out is that. We would, with the city's situation, we paid approximately uh. Ninety seven cents per transaction. In this. Scenario, the customer is paying that ninety nine cents.
Right.
And it doesn't come out of what we charge. And that's uh that is one of the things I see is a. Is a primary difference between what the city presented us with and what uh SP plus is presenting us with.
And I I guess the other way to look at it then too, Larry, if you look at the, like for example, the Wichita lot has roughly thirty eight thousand transactions, I. I think is what I based it on, um you know, the the SAS fee of twenty eight thousand two hundred dollars. You know, that that works out to be seventy four cents of tran- uh transaction, so if you were looking to pay, you know, there's at least a sixteen cent. Savings there um to on for the what the SAS fee is based on. Now, and then if I did, you know, twenty five, two divided by like nineteen thousand. But on alternatively, because the the other lot is smaller, the if the if you look, use that same logic. They have the transaction fee is higher. But the customer's paying the ninety nine cents and you're paying the the SAS fee for being on the the sphere platform. Uh and we're covering all the installation.
So the installation is not free, Bob?
I'm sorry?
The installation is not free?
No, it is, no, the hardware and installation is not.
Does that go away after the three years?
Um, we could negotiate that after the three years, um cuz obviously the. The capital investment to get started would go down, there would still be a small fee for being on the platform, but it could go down, yes.
What's the total install? What's the total amount for the install?
Uh around a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, so after three years, basically, it is, it is being paid in full.
Yes.
I'm telling you right now, if you'll be me negotiating, you're gonna see zero dollars after that, are you okay with that?
Um there would still be the the to be on that platform and we'd still be providing a product to you, so no, zero, no. But uh it would go down.
Okay, with one dollar?
You're a tough negotiator.
Okay, um other questions, Mike, anybody else?
Yes, I have some, um okay, so the citations, what happens if they dispute the citation?
I, it can be voided and it may not get paid, um if you're unless there's some way that. The city is putting the weight of its, you know, of the municipality behind it, but you know, other than municipalities. Um you know, we, you know, our third party provider cannot like withhold someone's ability to get their driver's license or. Renew their, you know, renew their re- registration for their car or anything like that.
Right, so we would lose that then because right now they document it. Um so.
One thing I've seen in the locations where we are using this, um is that the the percentage of people that do pay. Plus the violation fee that the owner ends up. You know, breaking even on it for the, because the people that do pay plus the plus the violation fee covers the people that. You know, that don't pay.
Right, so now the monthly fee is the. Twenty five thousand and twenty eight thousand, I I mean, that's the yearly fee.
It is, yes.
Okay, and that's gonna continue on, I was confused about what you and Shimi were talking about then.
I think that, I think what Shimi is saying is that, you know, after three years and the the capital that we put into it is, you know, is paid off. There's still a, there's still a fee to be on the for they be on the platform of the product.
Right.
Um but it's, you know, part of this is also recovering the the capital that we're gonna put into it.
Okay, so um and what personnel would be assigned to? Us to talk to when the machines are down or the cameras are down or. Um what kind of customer service, since you wouldn't have employees from you guys here anymore?
Right, um well, we have, we have managers that would be your point of contact, um and we, you know, I've got planned here for folks to be. You know, uh being on our side that are again covered by the, you know, the by these the SAS fees. That are reviewing the images and taking care of things, so you'd still have points of contact for for things. Um in the installations, um frankly, the the some that I've done this year, you know, the first sixty to ninety days. Were probably in contact a lot and I've got a a newer installation here uh that start went live in July. That, you know, since, you know, maybe the beginning of, beginning to middle of October. Um other than calling them to ask them how they're doing, uh they're not calling me and saying, you know. Why, you know, how do we do this and how do we do that?
Right, so. Um but no one's monitoring the transaction, so it could be down for a whole day or two days. Before somebody discovers that it's not even working since it's automated, how is there an alert or something, how?
No.
Zero for the day, what would happen?
No, um what, actually, you have access to that one tier, to you have access to this. And my team has access to this and there is an alert when there, you know, you can look at this and there's alerts that'll tell you, you've got a camera down.
Okay.
You, you know, someone on your side.
Would have to monitor it a bit, though, right?
Well, you have the ability, you can choose not to, but yes, you have the ability to do it and we'd have folks that that will be their job every day. To look and see that, you know, as I mentioned, before we send out violations, we're making sure that we want to send that violation out.
Okay, right, and then um for maintenance of the cameras. Um you have people in Colorado Springs to help service that quickly because we couldn't be down for more than. Few hours or a day, so how quickly can you fix the cameras?
The, well, if someone takes a baseball bat to it, you know, we'd have to order a, you know, get a camera and have it shipped to us. So that might be, take a day or two, um but the, I have several of these installations in Denver and Colorado Springs. And to this point, I haven't had a service call yet, other than. There's a location in Colorado Springs that someone literally took a baseball bat to and I had to order another camera.
I'll shut up, but one more question.
Sure.
What about the snow? Um covering up the cameras like right now, we're in Manitou and it's snowing, what's gonna happen when the cameras are covered up?
Um there's actually a little lip, I don't know if you can see it here.
Yeah, there's a cover.
This thing's kind of sticks out a little bit um and keeps the lens from, you know. And now, eh that doesn't mean we won't have to send some, I mean, if like, for example, in the Ballard cameras. Um if we have to send someone over to clean the lens or something like that, you know, we're we're gonna see it and you're gonna see it cuz the images are gonna get blurry. Um when, you know, these images here, when we're looking at them. Uh right here on the on the cameras, we're gonna see that, you know, there's some, you know, clarity. Uh degradation and we're gonna send someone over to, you know, take care of that. But we haven't had the um for the for the installations we have and we have two of them in Colorado Springs. Um that we, one of them has four cameras and the other one has three. And we haven't had that scenario happen yet, either in over, you know, one of them's been up for almost two, two years. And the other one's been uh six or seven months and we haven't had that.
Are those outside?
They are, yes.
Okay, can you, do you know where they're at?
Sure, um one of the these three camera installation is at six to home. Um and the four camera uh installation is at five twenty eight to home. The, when you go to the, if you're gonna, and I invite you to go do that, um if you go to the six to home location. There's three cameras, there there's uh there's gates there actually, but the gates are activated when you drive into on into the lot. Um and there the loop that's there that used to activate the ticket dispenser now just tells the gate to go up. And it's exactly, everything we've talked about here today would work exactly the same way and um. The loop, they, we just have the loops there and the gates there so that people know what's an in and what's an out. Because the gates were already there for that, for the owner of that lot and we were able to use three cameras instead of six.
I have a feeling that's the Jenkins lot there across from the Peak Theater, you know, that one building.
Um it's across from the um.
On Pike's Peak, at the Peak Theater, but across from um. Uh I don't know the building.
No, it's there, there's, it's across the street from from the the hotel there.
Oh, okay. Great, thank you.
I had it, are you done, Rolf?
Yep, I'm done.
Okay, I and I guess my question was, was there a simpler method? Than this sphere and my question was gonna be, did you have any gates anywhere? And is that a, not a preferred method anymore?
Um well, with if you, we we actually, you know, have our our own gate manufactured and we have terminals that we can put in. Um I went with kind of what you have here today, this is actually. You know, the least expensive option cuz if you start adding gates, you're gonna add cost, you're gonna take away some cost of cameras. But you're gonna add the cost of the gates and you're gonna increase the cost of the installation, um the. With this would, this might be the uh the most simplistic one, other than to not enforce it at all.
Okay.
But if you're interested in that, I, we have other solutions, but this is the most, uh this is probably the most direct. One that, you know, provides you what you're looking for it, or what we wanna recommend for you.
Bob, what's the difference between this one that you just recommended to us? To the one that's uh being operated at uh seven oh two Manitou Ave, which is known as uh the old stagecoach.
Okay, at seven oh two, it's, this is the exact same product in terms of how the customer pays. But what is different is that the, we provided handhelds to the uh our. Our client at seven oh two and they go do the enforcement themselves, which you know, that's a twenty one space lot. So again, if if there's a, if you have a way to do staffing. Um that you wanna do direct, I mean, we can provide the staffing, but this is gonna be the more, if you think about it. This gives you a, you know, a an attendant on duty twenty four seven when someone parks. If we do staffing and we're only coming there three days a week, seven days a week, you know, you only have enforcement happening, you know, in those. Small windows, but at at seven oh two, we gave them the handheld and they're doing the enforcement themselves.
There are no cameras on site over there?
There are not.
That's what I thought. Um. I'm not sure how. This is gonna save us, um when I spoke to Larry. I believe Larry told me that ninety nine cents will be paid by the um customer. And there won't be any credit card fee, um if you go back to your operating, uh you know, that 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 pa- that page. Thank you, uh there is a credit card fee over here, you are charging the ninety nine cents and SP plus is taking it directly. Uh you said there is no charge for the installation, but. There sure is, it's at twenty eight thousand uh per year, um. Correct me if I'm wrong on any of those uh.
No, you're you're correct, there's the, there there is, I mean, the credit card fee is just the pass through of the expense with the credit card processor. Would would charge us, there's no markup or anything on that.
Sure, the question is, you know, after three years, you're basically paid off uh for your. Installation, my 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 question is, bottom line is, what would that be? I mean, are you gonna be? Happy enough with the ninety nine cents, in in my opinion, you should be happy enough with the ninety nine cents uh transaction fee. Uh that people are gonna keep uh paying. Are you not?
I I'd be happy to loo- look at that, Shimi, cuz you're you're correct, there's, um if I. I didn't run the numbers out in that scenario, but I'd be happy to do so. Um because there may be enough transactions to do exactly what you're proposing, I've done other deals like that. Um and this one, just with the capital investment, I can't do that, you know, in the first three years.
Understood, understood.
But I I'd be happy to look at it and get back to you.
Okay, and the last, the last um. The last thing I can think about that's kind of a problem is you mentioned you still need that uh internet connection. Uh my question is, I believe right now we are paying for that internet connection and that's that twenty four thousand dollar charge that we're. Being um charged by the city. Uh is is that correct, James?
Paying twenty four thousand dollars for an internet connection?
Or for the towers or something like that, Larry, can you remember that?
Uh yes, we actually, we we budgeted twenty thousand for uh our internet connections for our kiosk. And so far this year, we've. Um well, the actual last year was thirteen thousand, we budgeted twenty thousand for this year.
Uh what would it be? Sorry, go ahead, Larry.
And that is specifically for the internet connection for the kiosk.
The, now the, the other installations we have, the the client is providing the internet connection. So.
Okay.
This this model was based on all that same assumption.
Understood.
I'm, hey, guys, I'm a little confused here cuz I do see where we had a budget for twenty thousand for internet connection. But I also see where it says we spent four hundred and thirty dollars. Nicole, do you know what's, why I'm reading this wrong? It says, this is under the twenty twenty three current year actual.
For the. Are we, are we done with the presentation for with with them and I can pull up the finance information again, or what do you want to have?
Well, we can wait. No, that four four hundred, that's go down to the next one after that, uh. Uh actual first budget. Uh for the.
The end of November or through November.
For twelve twenty through nine twenty four, look at that. What page are you on, Larry? Uh this would be page seven. Okay. Okay. Last year, last year, we spent. Uh the kiosk connection, we spent uh thirteen thousand. Okay. Got it. We budgeted twenty thousand. Okay, and then this. The actual for November was twenty seven hundred, I don't see where. It is, you know, what what we spent year to date, uh Nicole, maybe you can help me with that.
Bob, could you uh email me uh this this file so I can look at it? Uh just now on my phone and.
Yeah, and, oh, okay, yes, certainly, yep.
Thank you, thank you so much, that one, I can print it and actually, um I might, I'm. I might even send you more questions if I have any more later on, if that's okay with you.
Of course, can I get your email address, Shimi?
Yes, absolutely, it is flying eagle, F L Y I N G eagle, E A G L E. Nine four six at gmail dot com.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. The um. Yeah, I'm I'm a little. Surprise if your internet can I connectivity is that high? Our clients provide the internet connectivity. I know we just did an installation in Beaver Creek. And I can see what is being paid there, but I've done. Uh, we don't recommend it, but in there are some places where you can't get data too. And you can put cellular service there for like fifty dollars a month. Uh, we don't recommend cellular service more other than a backup. Because the it it degrades when there's, you know, a lot of activity on the cell tower. Which is why we recommend, you know, a a direct, you know, hardwire. Um, which is why we would want to take, you know, we would trench from the T two units. To where the power over ethernet boxes. Or the where the data would go into the box to go be pulled up to the camera. It's it's CAT six cable that gets pulled up into the cameras.
Uh, yeah, my my understanding of what this internet. Connection was for was for the kiosk. To uh uh transfer data back and forth between uh. Uh, the prison paying and the kiosk company.
My phone bill for my office. Is, you know, which includes the phones and data and everything else. Is a thousand and I my office has, you know, we have like, uh, I don't know, there's ten. Ten offices and three or four cubicles is a thousand dollars a month. I guess I would end up being, you know, twelve thousand dollars, but I'm doing. You know, an entire office and. Um, we, you know, the speeds need to be a hundred down and fifty up, but. You know, we all all of I mean, my at home, my router. You know, my my cable bill is, you know, and internet cable internet bill is under two hundred dollars a month.
Well, I'm just looking at what we paid last year.
We can we can ask the city, you know, Larry, I'm sure.
Larry, last year was three years combined. That was the uh the thirteen thousand. So far this year, it's the two thousand seven hundred. That's through November.
Why? Why is it that we budgeted thirty five thousand for next year then?
I was just going off of the previous numbers for the previous year. Um, we're not gonna use it.
The the previous year was twenty thousand. Yeah, well, this year we we budgeted three thousand this year and we only spent twenty seven hundred. And and next year, we're gonna budget thirty five thousand? Doesn't seem right here.
I think she made a mistake, Larry. And she just wrote thirty five just because it was written there before. Correct, Nicole?
It was just increasing costs, just kind of to make sure everything was covered. Does it not mean that we? Have to spend that? I think that there was some talk that we would have to do some replacement. Of some of the equipment for T two and that's part of that internet connection and those kiosk top costs. And twice thirty five thousand.
So you might have added on three or five thousand dollars for each of three kiosks. Might be what you came up with that extra. All right, well, that makes sense now. Maybe, yeah. Yeah, with that with that in mind, that makes sense. Okay. Maybe, yeah.
Okay, let's go back to the presentation.
Yeah, our internet connection is not as bad as it did appear here. And yes, I had somehow forgotten that that thirteen thousand was for three years.
It's hard to remember everything all the time.
Well, you know, you know, if you did think about it, like the equivalent of the cost of a cellphone line. And we got three kiosks, that's a hundred and fifty a month times twelve months is eighteen hundred dollars. So. Twenty, what did we say we spent this year so far? Seven hundred. Yeah, seems really. Well, seems a little bit high.
Let's go back to the presentations, guys.
You bet.
Any other questions for Bob or any insights?
I'm good.
Okay.
I don't have any.
Um, Jimmy, I'll um I'll e- I'll email this to you and I'll run the numbers like what year like what year four, five, six would look like. If there was no capital involved.
That would be that would be awesome. Okay, I appreciate that. Yeah, I will. And can I ask you one last question?
Certainly.
Uh, if I find a different provider, a credit card, that would be less than the four point two percent that you guys are offering, can we use them? Or is that part of your profit for for your portfolio?
It has nothing to do with our profit. It just has to do with who we. Work with from a bank reconciliation standpoint, so that the, you know, the reporting comes in and we can reconcile. That, you know, what we've received versus what was reported. Um, so it's it's it there. There is no profit in in that, and I'm just using an average number.
Okay.
Um, and I the credit cards as a percentage is a lit, you know. Uh, I'm not sure how low you can go, but. It's a little bit of, you know, it might from my understanding anyway, there's a it's a little bit of a misnomer because if you buy. Something for a hundred dollars. And the credit card fee is, you know, a trans there's a fifty cent transaction by the processor plus. You know, two percent of the sale or something like that is way different than when you're you've got a five, ten, fifteen dollar purchase.
Yeah, that's that's why there's uh two different uh ways to uh they they and 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 they they usually show up and. They'll obviously um show you different different ones, uh probably the ones that works better for them.
Yeah, who do you uh who do you use as your credit card processor? Who who is?
I I have different ones in my shops, but uh I I actually use Heartland for my payroll, I'll be honest with you. Uh, so I'm very familiar with them. Um, but usually the credit card fees are uh they shouldn't cross the three percent as as at at least as a retail um um. Law, I would say, uh, you know, when it does, uh, it's time to shop around.
Okay.
At least that's what I do.
Okay.
All right. I appreciate it.
And Jimmy. And I I've worked I've worked with Bob Bowler when I was in Denver and uh he he's done a great job, you know, with this type of technology. So um. Uh, you know, it was it was good seeing you, Bob.
Likewise, Juan. I I appreciate the endorsement. Um, I I do encourage you guys to go to go to Colorado Springs and. Go, you know, go try the park at six day home or five twenty eight day home. It's right next to that. The with the biscuit um place with the uh. Right on at the corner of uh on on day home there and um, yeah, so, yeah, go go have a pizza and. Uh, and a beer and and park on the lot behind there. You gotta go, you can during the day, the lot is actually free. Um, for the tenants of the building and and we work with the landlord there. That where they give us the the VIP list that we put into the database. And uh, you know, the parking is only paid after five o'clock. And um, and that that location's been there since the fall of twenty one. With the only one, the cameras on other than vandalism, the cameras have never gone down.
Okay, is the client Norwood over there? Is that?
Um, no, that that is that is not um uh what is um. No, 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 we have other locations with Norwood. Um, and actually, we're looking. At some doing some work with them that they've got. As you guys know, it's mostly surface lots, um, but we're actually working with them to look at one of their garages. And we put this, we put the same thing we put on the seven oh two Manitou lot. Um, on a one of their properties that they had a coin box there and they just wanted to get rid of the coin box. And we put the we got rid of the coin box and put signs up and we actually have um. You know, we have the our our team there that, you know, enforces. But they're looking to do some things with us in their garage now.
Well, good luck with that.
Thank you. Yeah, they came to Denver and saw one of our garages here and were very impressed with how it worked out.
Nice. Uh, last uh chance, any questions for Bob? Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thanks. Thanks. Thanks for the opportunity to be here this afternoon. You guys have a great rest of your afternoon.
Thank you as well. We'll be in touch, bro.
Great, great. Thank you. All right.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay, um. Discussion. Okay, going back to this discussion, um. I'm not sure. I don't see James. Uh, maybe he is here, maybe he's not. Um, hi, James. Welcome back. Okay, awesome. Hey, so. Uh, before we go back to this discussion, I think I asked Kevin before and I'm gonna do the same with uh. With you and Juan. And everybody from the city, if there is an item that needs to be added. To the metro's agenda, I would like to know prior. It is not a given that you guys are just putting it on the agenda.
So please. That's on me. I uh it was kind of more or less on the fly. Um, so I I do apologize for that. It's on.
Yeah, and it was also some confusion because I know uh we had scheduled like uh the maps and the the other meetings to uh skip the month of December just because a lot of people were on vacation, so. We also were had a delay with the preparation on that because a lot of people were out, but uh moving forward, we'll make sure that uh.
Yeah, it just it it just gives us an opportunity uh maybe to to prepare better. I mean, when you just throw something on here. I'm not prepared. I have nothing to offer you. I have no answers. Um, it's it it would just just be easier. Uh, with a little bit of a heads up, please.
Yeah, don't worry. And also, when it comes down to the. You know, if we have to order equipment or uh similar to what happened with the printers, we'll let you we'll notify you ahead of time as well, uh so that you're in the loop.
That would be awesome. I I and and this is uh this digital permit discussion will actually go back to this uh. What you just said, it's kind of my way of knowing how or or if someone actually have a permit, so. I I I don't think it will be. Um, I don't think it's a good idea, at least in my eyesight. Um, it just helps me when I actually walked a lot. And this this last uh weekend, I believe, when I walked a lot. Hardly anybody had um um. A receipt paper in the car, so and that's I tried to call you guys, by the way. Um, is is there a new number for the parking department or? Can you provide the direct parking?
Provide it for you.
Yeah, so the the number should be the same. Um. Let me just make sure I have the it's the the parking hotline number. It's gonna be seven uh seven one nine. Um. I always get a couple of these confused. Let me just make sure before I give it to you. Uh, so it's gonna be seven one nine three zero one eight four one three.
Thank you. I appreciate it. So that day when I was walking, um, there were no uh receipt paper in the. Uh, you know, in hardly any of the cars over there. Um. And and it helps me when there is. That's how I found out that the. Um, printers were not working. And they were working for a good week, if not more than that, probably more than that. I believe you guys were waiting on the printers to show up. They showed up. Um. So it helps when there is a parking permit. On the on the dashboard. Um, you know, if they if they do it online, how would I know if that car paid or not?
Sure, um, so. Uh, in terms of uh. Uh. Enforcement, um, it it really is just a a preference. Um. The 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 memo itself, it it really wasn't meant to be like a like a make a decision at this meeting. It was more or less just to to provide information as as far as what we can do. And more or less just put out what we are looking at doing for for some of our permits. Um, just so to 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 start a discussion, put some of those things on your radar. Um, so if that is something that you are interested in doing at all. Um, that it's it's something that you would think about going forward and and possibly discuss it more. Um, so it it wasn't put on there to be a a a flat. Let's make a decision on this at this meeting. Um, it was it was purely informational. Um. Um, but I I do apologize for not reaching out to you. Prior, it was it was very much last minute. Um, and it was off the back of just a a question that we had received regarding permit issuance. Um, so we just kind of tied everything that that we were looking at permit wise into it. Um. But as as far as knowing whether or not a vehicle has a permit or not. Um, it it really comes down to with our current system, it's hard to know. Uh, that without a physical dis uh permit because it's not tied to any license plate. Right now, it's just that permit's valid for whatever vehicle is hanging in. Um, and that just presents additional difficulty for us from the enforcement side. So for instance, if we're using the LPR technology. Um, we were not able to see always at that permit, that vehicle has a permit displayed. Because a lot of these permits are they're registered to one vehicle. But oftentimes, it's it's businesses that that are providing these permits to their employees and those employees are changing quite often. Uh, so we we still have to do manual uh checks of those permits with the current system. With a digital system, it would be registered to a very specific plate. Um, and uh enforcement staff would have access to that information. Um. And uh, I mean, we would.
What would happen if there is that scenario, James, when there is a different employee? Um, and and I grab that permit. And it's not, you know, it's linked right now to a different uh registration. And now it's got to be linked to someone else. How how will that work? Would that will they need to come in?
So with with. Our current system, we we just it's valid in whatever vehicle it's hanging in. Um. And it's right now, we don't have an efficient way of of updating it. Um. Uh, and that goes back to creating a a portal that would allow customers to be able to to update their permanent information on the fly. Um. With with uh a a physical permit system that we could still implement that. Um, it would just be more reliant on on customers going in and and actually updating that information. Um. But uh, that is certainly something that can still happen. Um, it's just something that would would need to be developed. I don't know if if T two has. That functionality readily available. It's something we'd have to. Touch base with them because they they may. Um, this is just the. We we've started discussing digital permits and and we more or less wanted to. To to put it. Uh, in this space as well, um, since a a good chunk of the permits we we do refer. Uh. The the metro lots, Missionary Wichita, so.
Did anybody else have an opinion on this? I mean, my opinion is I would like to have it printed. I would like to have it hanging in the cars. Um. Anybody else?
I like to see a physical tag myself.
Okay. Larry, Mike, you guys are.
Uh, I tend to be a futurist myself. Um, I don't necessarily I don't do anything physical anymore. Everything I do is uh digital and on my phone. Um, I think that's eventually the way we're gonna end up going in the future, but. Um, but that's just my humble opinion.
Ralph? Hope is.
Ralph is uh muted.
Okay, what do you think?
Myself, since I don't ever walked a lot. Uh, I I can't say that I really have an opinion.
Okay. Fair enough. Um. James, is this where you guys are going with uh?
Uh, well, like I said, we're we're looking at LPR technology currently. Um, it would be a similar system to what was presented today um. Through uh through SP. Um, and the idea is is it would it would automate enforcement. Um, which would make it a lot more efficient as well. Um, and and the 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 company that we uh. Uh, have done a bit of a demo with. They they offer a very similar uh platform. where they, they install the cameras and they also have a, a team of people that, that monitor the camera feed, um, just to make sure that those reads are correct. Um, and then ultimately, they would, they would more or less flag vehicles that, that need to have tickets go out. Um, and then there's a, a more or less of a delay before those citations actually get mailed, and that gives us an opportunity to review anything or change anything or, or stop them before they actually go out. So it is something that's very much on our radar, nothing, nothing concrete on that yet. Um, so I, I, I'm not too sure, um, if we go that route. It's just digital permitting would, would make that more effective. It would be, uh, it would be more, uh, of an additional process to do, uh, physical permits with the LPR system. Um, because we would, we would still need for enforcement purposes, we would still need them to, to register those vehicles to a specific permit. We could offer the hang tags still, um, the physical hang tag, but it, it would be registered to a specific vehicle. Um, and then going back to that, that portal that would allow customers to change their vehicle on demand. Um, it, it, it's seeming more and more likely that that's, that's what we're gonna need to do, um, if we, if we do go this route. Um, so it's, it's something that's on our radar, not just for the parking lots, but we're also looking at um, going digital for, for residential permits. Um, now, that's something that, that we're still in talks with, we haven't, haven't presented anything as far as that goes, but uh, we're, we're definitely, um, wanting to go digital.
Can I ask you a last question? Um, right now, you guys are checking the lots just with cars, correct? You guys are now walking?
Yeah, so right now, we're, we're using the, the LPR, um, to, uh, to, to check plates. Um, and then we're still, there's still a degree of, of manual enforcement there. So, um, after we run the lot with the, the vehicle mounted LPR, um, it, it's still a, a manual enforcement on that.
How many times do you run to Wichita and to Smithney a day?
Um, right now, with current staffing, um, we try to get through there two times a day, at least.
Are you still signing on the door of the restroom? Or is that something you're not familiar with?
Uh, uh, as far as like the, the, just the, the hours? Or like the bathroom hours?
It's just basically saying, hey, James was here today at ten o'clock, or, you know, Maria was here at blah, blah, blah. So there is some kind of, uh, an idea of somebody that's been there and was scanning the lots. I know the kids that are walking by are not, they're absolutely not. They told me that it's only a vehicle that is doing the lots. Is that correct?
Uh, you, for the most part, yes, because we're able to, to, to tho, to enforce those lots quicker with the, the mounted LPR. Um, as far as the, the logs, um, that's something that, that we haven't been very good about um, in, in recent times, um, so that would definitely be something that we would need to, uh, refocus, uh, effort wise.
Yeah, Jimmy, I was just recently made aware of that and, uh, that's something we can implement and, uh, put, put it back on, uh, on the radar so that we can start doing it again.
That would be awesome. Thank you. Um, any questions for James or any more discussion on this topic? All right, thank you so much. All right, the next item is discussion about the possibility of lowering the mill levy. Mike, you requested this on the agenda, you wanna?
Sure, sure. Thanks, Jimmy.
Yeah.
Um, hey, you know, guys, the, it just was brought up to my attention that some of the other government agencies have lowered their mill levies because the valuations on property went up so high. And, uh, you know, part of that, to me, I mean, we've got a pretty low mill levy ourselves. And I'm glad Nicole's still here, because I wanted to have Nicole chime in on this. But, uh, uh, Nicole, do you know how, how much we collect, uh, how much Metro gets total out, out of the taxes?
Speaking of things, it would have been nice for me to know this in advance, so I could maybe get some better figures together.
Okay, what was on the agenda?
Well.
Our. And when you get on, according to our budget, we, we brought in forty-eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars on property taxes.
I'm sorry, I've already, uh, sent our mill levy in. They got the new assessment. They'll have to budget based off of this number. So what I'm going to need to do when they send me the new numbers, which they have not done yet, um, and uh, what I'm going to need to do, because those aren't due out until January third, I have to have that turned in by January tenth. So, uh, if there's an adjustment that I need to make to match what we've already put in the budget, I will need to do those calculations and things like that. And then we will need to do the resolution.
Well, this is, this is what we need to know.
Exactly.
I mean, we're, we're, we're just kind of talking about it. Okay, so this is the deadlines?
These are the deadlines, can you see it?
So, you know, I guess, I guess what we want, what I wanted to do was have a discussion about, do we want to follow suit with all these other agencies? But, uh, you know, we don't, I don't think we collect a whole lot of money off the mill levy anyway.
No, it's less than five thousand dollars. I think that, what was the number, two hundred and thirty residents? They said it's about twenty, uh, was it twenty-one fifty, so under twenty-two dollars. Uh, my recommendation, and, uh, just because of the timing on this, I think we leave it. I do the adjustment to match the mill levy that I turned in in October. Um, based off of the assessment that I got earlier in the year. And then we can look at making adjustments next year, if that's.
If that's your recommendation, I'll go with it.
Okay, so.
It's, it's not a big enough amount and it's such a short time period that it's not really enough time for us to discuss this. Get it done, because the next meeting is on the ten.
Well, okay, so we, we've all heard what Nicole's got to say, what do you guys want to do?
Well, if we're not collecting that much off of it, um, the time sensitive, I would say leave it be, Mike.
Okay, sounds good to me.
Anybody else? Right, I'm not the only one here.
I concur totally, I don't think, um, I'm not for changing it, it is already low. I think it's, um, a tool that we've lowered so much anyway, so.
I agree.
Well, you, you look at it, we, uh, last year, we brought in forty-four hundred dollars in property taxes, and we have approximately a hundred properties. So that's forty bucks, forty-four dollars per property. How much lower you want to go?
Two hundred and thirty properties, Larry, so it's less than twenty-two dollars.
Hundred and thirty, you said, Nicole?
I thought it was two thirty, am I wrong?
Two thirty?
Thirty properties?
Sounds like not.
Well, that doesn't sound right.
But with the short turn, turnaround, it's, this is what I submitted, was the forty-eight eighty-nine is what we submitted for our mill levy. And so base, I don't know what the new assessment will be, yet I have not received it. I'm going to have to make it match this.
Okay.
I mean, regardless, it looks like it's minimal, Mike.
Yeah, so I knew it was, I knew it was very minor, and I guess I just got caught up in the, uh, enthusiasm of these other agencies. So, you know, I mean, their differences are gonna make, they're gonna make a lot bigger difference. And I, I did remark to somebody that, uh, mentioned to me how much, uh, oh, the city lowered theirs, and I said, well, if you could just get the, uh, school district to drop theirs a lot, would, none of us would have to lower ours.
Well, the El Paso County's also lowered theirs. So City of Energy Springs and El Paso County.
Did the school district do anything?
I've not heard anything of that nature on this.
They raised it more than the others, too. I'm joking, I'm joking.
Hey, while we got Nicole here, this is just the one last question for Nicole. And the memorandum in the packet, was that supposed to be our total for the end of November or the end of October?
That is for the end of November and.
So we should all cross out the date and change it?
Did I not change?
October thirty-one.
But I was having some difficulties getting my general ledger to update.
Okay.
I just wanted, so, I don't know that the cash allocations were able to push through and I got, I actually got this information too, Elena, five minutes late. I ran out of time.
So the eight forty is the right amount, is just the date, Nicole, or just, uh, you're not sure?
See, uh, at, when I pulled the information on the system at that point in time, that was the, the amount.
Okay, so eight forty is the right amount, uh, for the end of November?
The expenditures and the cash allocations got updated.
Okie dokie.
So we can just change the date then? Got it, got it.
Hello?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, um, go back to the top here, sorry, guys. Uh, my thing. Any other questions, any other discussion before I go to public comment?
No.
Is there public comment? Is there somebody from the public here? That's a no, all right, I will see you soon on the executive session, guys.
Hey, one second.
Yes.
And a second to go into the executive session.
Okay, uh, make a motion, we're gonna move into an executive session, is there a second?
Okay.
You know, you guys know that since you're going into executive session, that most of us have to leave, correct?
Yeah, we have a different link for that.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Nicole. Um.
Yeah.
Anything else I need to give you just when it's, uh, uh, starting and, uh, done? Elena?
Just when it's starting, when it's done, and then who made the motion and the second to adjourn it?
Starting, done, motion, you got it, I'll email you.
Thank you.
Thank you.